Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 28th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have an approval of the minutes from the April 14th, 2020 regular minutes, regular meeting?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes, all but Ron. We have an opportunity for public comments. Oh, hi Liz.
Hello.
Uh.
Thanks.
I, every, no one has a picture, so I don't know if anybody wanted to make a public comment. How would I know? There's no. Like I have, there's nothing.
Raise a hand?
Yeah, but there's no pictures of anybody, so.
You could do it in participants if they wanted to push the little raise the hand thing on participants.
Yeah, I don't see anybody.
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna move on to reports and discussion, environmental hygiene report.
Yeah, this, this is our annual fire inspection report. They gave it a fancy name a few years ago, but that's what it is. The, uh, the inspection, which is conducted by, um, Brian Calandria from Dutchess Boses, who is the certified inspector for this, this annual task. Conducted the site visit on March 5th and issued his report on March 9th. And all the documentation is, is in your packets. As, as you can see from the page before, there's, before the certificate of occupancies. There's that single page lists the, uh, the issues. A number of them were minor, some of them were major. There's another, there's at least one more category beyond major, like catastrophic or something that's really, really life-threatening. So all of the, uh, all of the non-conformances were, were not of, uh, of a, uh, life-threatening, uh, severity, which we would, uh, would expect that would be the case. Uh, all of those items have long since been, uh, been addressed. You know, something like, uh, um, you know, uh, an emergency light that the bulb has been burned out. That, you know, that's a pretty easy fix to replace the, the bulb. We, that, that happens typically. We, we usually have a few emergency lights not functional, so the bulbs replaced. And, uh, probably by the time Brian left the buildings that day, most of those non-conformances were already corrected. The processes that Sheldon, uh, uploads these things into, uh, a website at the State Education Department. And then they, I go in and, uh, I go in and review and certify the reports. And then they, um, they allow us to, uh, to print the certificate of occupancy, which we need for every building. It's good for one year. Uh, and as you can see, the certificates of occupancy are in your packet. So all, uh, all of our buildings are good to go until, uh, uh, April 1 of, excuse me, April 1 of 2021. So we're, we're good to go. This is an annual process that we had, we're required to go through. And the board is not required to take any action on this. Just the fact that you've been listening to this report tonight is the action that you, that you take. We just have to, uh, be able to state that we reviewed this in a Board of Education meeting, which we will have done a few seconds from now. So that's basically it. Nothing very remarkable at all, but everything's been corrected.
Any, any questions?
Ted?
Is it any questions from anybody? Steve, is that a question or are you just?
Nope, sorry.
Okay. Alright, well, thanks Joe and, uh, thank Sheldon, obviously. He takes care of all this. Um, let's move on to Board Committee reports, Finance. We have two in Finance. Uh, I think Matt, you're first.
Yep, so the first one occurred last week. Number of topics were discussed during the meeting. First and firstly, uh, the district is working towards a one-to-one computing model. The goal is to provide one-to-one computers, um, uh, in the fall for grade six through 12. The professional development of that, uh, project will follow during the coming year. It looks like at this point, uh, the preference, the preferred computer is MacBooks for all grade levels. Uh, the committee discussed the importance of, uh, of the one-to-one computing model in view of the current COVID crisis. But also know the importance of having these computers going forward once regular, uh, learning resumes. Uh, and Marvin also noted the plans to integrate the technology into the classroom. After that discussion, there was a discussion of the transportation contracts. Uh, the committee discussed the importance of negotiating with the current vendors on certain payment arrangements, um, in view of the need that, uh, the district needs these companies to be viable once the period of remote learning is over. Then the committee discussed childcare. District has offered to provide childcare, uh, the facilities for childcare rather. But so far, there's not been enough demand to justify the need for that. Tom gave a brief update on the capital projects and discussed how changes in the bond markets might impact the financing costs. Uh, it was also noted that the DEC had closed the spill project matter. Tom then, uh, reviewed the COVID impact on the budget. He noted he is still analyzing the potential impact. Tom then discussed the potential for state aid cuts this year and next, and concluded by providing update on reserves. Uh, the committee, uh, media of the committee, uh, was next scheduled for April 23rd, which I think Steve is going to report on now.
Questions for Finance? Or do you want to wait till both reports are done? Cause they.
Probably not a bad idea, since the two meetings were a week apart.
Alright, Steve, why don't you do yours and then we'll put two questions on both.
Sure, so Marvin and Steve came to this meeting as well, and we took a deeper dive into the, the rollout of the six through 12 Mac Airs. Um, the high school faculty thought that there'd be some consistency across, uh, the students of having the same device. All six grades would be beneficial, as well as, um, you know, the teachers being able to teach teachers and, and some support with one model all the way through. We then talked about the school lunch fund probably wouldn't be profitable this year. I mean, there's no paid lunches. We're spending money on, on food and, and labor to provide lunches, breakfast and lunch. Uh, we looked at some budget transfers. Uh, we looked at transportation contracts with legal counsel on what, how, what, and how much we're contractually obligated to pay. Uh, we've also noted that there may be a lack of bus drivers when school reopens due to, um, the age of the drivers tend to be a little bit older and they may be a little bit nervous about leaving their houses. Kepler project looks better positioned to be completed this year because most companies already have their supplies on hand, so they could do most of the work over the summer. Yeah, same thing that Matt mentioned, um, there's talk about letting school districts go above a 4% reserve limit. Currently, school districts are the only municipality or other government agency that is bound by a 4% rule. And they think that, you know, due to the unex, you know, unexpenses may be unknown when we go back to school, that that might not be a bad idea. Um, and then Tom also mentioned that there, he heard a 20% reduction possibly in foundation aid over the next year or two, and that would equate to a $400,000 cut to our, our state aid.
As a maximum. Okay, that's, that's a max.
Uh, questions for Finance? Nobody, alright, I got a couple of questions. So Tom, if, if we were, if we were going to, um, if, if we had to create some of the reserve funds we talked about, maybe you had talked about that once before. There were some new funds that we could potentially create. Are there anything, anything we have to do before the end of the fiscal year as far as approving? Or, I know some of them you'd said in the past had to have, like, approval before they could be created.
Correct. I, I've reached out to Margot and, um, really, we're only really needing to, uh, create two particular reserves. The, the other reserves, we already have created. And it's just a board function as far as approving the, the transfer to those reserves that we already have set up. But the, the two reserves that we are looking to set up are for the retirement system. One for the employee retirement system and one for the teacher retirement system. That needs a board approval to create, uh, to create and fund by June 30th. Whereas the tax tertiary, the accrued liability benefit, and unemployment reserve can all be updated after, uh, June 30th. But, uh, so we got time, but the, but the employee contribution reserves, or not employee contribution, there are the employer contributions, that would have to be created by the board by June 30th and funded by June 30th. One of the things that we're beginning to look at, and it's getting a little bit better, but we just have to get actual numbers, is what is our fund balance at the end of this year? So that we know exactly how much money we have to move. So there's still a lot to go on between now and the end of the year. And that is, there are savings now in this particular budget. What are those savings? And then how we can apply it to make sure it's liquid enough so that we can use those reserves as needed? Because it could be a little volatile over the next year or two.
Okay, so, but we're on track to do whatever.
Yep, yep. We're just, Margot's doing some, um, some resolutions and, uh, we'll be putting the Rhinebeck, uh, you know, normoclature towards it. And, uh, and when we figure out what the correct funding levels are for each of these, then we'll present this to the Finance Committee and then to the Board for, for approvals.
Okay, thank you. So I have a lot of questions on the one-to-one devices. I mean, I feel like over the last, obviously, these last, the two minutes that we have here and then what we'd heard before, this plan has kind of changed multiple times. The cost has increased. It, there's a lot of change with it and I'm, I guess I'm, I need some more information about this. I mean, it's not totally clear for me if, you know, are we just trying to get these devices because we're concerned this is gonna happen again? Because that's, that doesn't make sense to me because I understood that we, we gave out devices and that right now, all our students have devices that they need. So if, if that's not the reason, are we going to be, if we're gonna be moving to one-to-one, are we gonna have the professional development? Are we gonna be ready to go with that when we go back to school, if we go back to school in September? I just, it's not clear like what the plan is. And then the, the, the type of computers have changed between the two, between the first meeting and the second meeting. It went from Chromebooks to Mac Air. So I'm just, there's just a lot of change. Obviously, there's a lot more than what's in these minutes. But, um, you know, it's a lot of money that we're talking about. So I'm just, I guess, looking for some more information.
Well, I, I gotta turn this one over to Joe as our instructional leader and Steve Jensen as our technology leader, uh, to explain, you know, what that process has looked like. I, I got the budget figures and that type of thing, but they have the entire reasoning and that instructional background for, for why they think it's important.
Well, Tom, before you go, the, the money that we're.
I'm still here.
But the money that we're transferring for that, is that money that has to be used for technology? Or is this money that can be used for anything?
It could be used for anything.
Okay. Alright.
Well, I'll start, then I'll turn it over to Steve for the, the, the nuts and bolts of, uh, of the, uh, the technology that we're talking about purchasing. And, and I, I guess I want to make the point that in, in our many discussions of this topic over the last several, several weeks, very intensively, I, I think two things have, have come to our attention. I think the most important thing is that, as a result of our staff being in a position of having to, uh, provide, uh, remote learning to our students during the last six, seven weeks or so, uh, using technology that, um, are, I think, are, are teachers who were already, um, using technology fairly robustly, uh, have gone that much further with the technology. And, uh, the, the members of our instructional staff, who were not utilizing technology on a regular basis, have found themselves in the position of having to use technology to deliver instruction every day. And I think, as a result of that, we've seen, um, we've seen a significant uptick in, uh, in faculty interest, uh, in using technology. And we think that, um, if we can, uh, if we can provide the devices to our, to our students, uh, and at, at this point, we're talking about a targeted group of grade level six through 12, that it might be an opportune time to, to leverage our teachers', uh, familiarity and increasing knowledge of the use of technology to expand the use of technology to the classroom and not solely in a remote learning situation that we find ourselves in currently. There is also the consideration that if we, uh, if we are able to embark on a one-to-one, uh, model, which by the way, we had been discussing prior to, uh, coronavirus. This is not something that, that just popped into somebody's head over the last couple of weeks. We had been discussing this previously. But we also, um, are aware of the fact that if, and it's a, it's an if right now, but if there is a resurgence of, um, the kind of school closures resulting from a second wave of, uh, COVID-19 infection during the coming year, that, uh, that our students will be better prepared and, uh, more so that our teachers will be, uh, will be better prepared to, uh, to be teaching in a, in a remote context. But remote learning is not the only, and perhaps not even the most important reason that we think this is an opportune time, uh, if we can leverage the financial support to be, um, engaging our staff and engaging our students in this kind of, uh, learning, uh, methodology, both at home and, uh, and, uh, in the classroom. Uh, so I just want to make it clear that this is not solely a, uh, a plan to address a second wave of COVID-19 during the coming school year. It's, it's actually much, much broader than that and we envision it going much, much further than that. And, uh, I, we think it will be very successful because many, many of our teachers, having spent the last seven weeks using technology to deliver instruction, have become much more enthusiastic about it, have taken it even further, those who were pretty well, uh, immersed in it to begin with. Uh, so we think it's, uh, uh, we think it's the right time to do it if we can make it happen financially. And Steve, uh, I'll, I'll shoot it over to you to talk a little bit about the, the nuts and bolts of the, of the, the program, the hardware, et cetera.
Yeah, um, basically, uh, Ed Davenport had gone and met with the department chairs when, um, we started considering this whole process. Um, and, uh, this, that, those meetings happened subsequent to the meetings that you've been privy to. And, um, so, uh, the, the department chairs came back and reported back that, uh, the, the platform of choice would be the Mac Airs. And we've done some studies on this over, over the several years, when it comes to total cost of ownership and, and longevity of devices and things like that. What we found was that, uh, that, uh, the price differential was not that different. Um, we were talking, we're looking at about a 20% co, increase in cost between the original Chromebook proposal and the, uh, the Mac Air proposal. So the difference isn't that great. It does afford us, uh, uh, some, some proprietary tools that are on the Mac platform that, uh, uh, aren't on the other platforms. And it also, um, does give some consistency across the board. I know there was some talk about, um, you know, trying to divert, uh, have some little diversity of experiences for the students, um, throughout their, um, their, um, tenure at Rhinebeck. However, uh, because we have, basically, at the, um, K2, we have iPads. 3.5, we have Mac Airs. 6.8, we have Mac Airs. Um, at the high school, we had a mixture of Mac Airs and Chromebooks. But also in intertwined with all those are also some computer labs that we have on, on campus, which are PC-based, uh, devices. So we, we have, particularly at the, uh, middle school, where both the Project Leadway Lab and the middle school lab are both PC-based, um, areas. So students are getting the experience, um, that we're looking for. And, um, I think, you know, to, to piggyback a little bit on Joe said, I think there is an excitement. I think the, uh, the, uh, the staff, particularly at the high school, is, is excited about, uh, technology at this point. They've seen what works, what doesn't work. It's, they've been thrown into this, uh, you know, as we all have, been thrown into this COVID-19, uh, situation. And I think they're seeing some potentials that they, you know, just needed the time to be able to do that and see this. And now they want to exper, experiment with it and bring it forward. I know that, uh, we're, we're working aggressively right now on the professional development side of it. To give you a little background, the high school's already had experiences with, with this platform. They currently have had for the past two years, um, MacBook Air carts. Uh, there's four of them. They first started out with two, then we added two more. So they've been used to that technology and they're also being, um, issued a Mac Air, um, for their, um, for themselves. Um, that's one of the things that we did when we implemented the technology at, uh, at CLS and at BMS. We were able to, uh, give them a Mac Air, a personal laptop, that they were able to, uh, basically take home and learn and, and experiment with and, and to, you know, stretch themselves utilizing that technology. And we want to be able to do that for the high school. And, uh, to be honest with you, it's been a long time coming for the high school. They've, uh, they deferred and I, I don't know if I mentioned this the last time, but I've been in so many Zoom meetings that I, it kind of blurred together. But, uh, one of the choices we had, um, a little while ago was whether we bought the two additional Mac Air carts or do we provide Mac Airs for the staff? And the staff, you know, to their credit, um, what, you know, basically took a straw vote and said, "Look, no, let's give the technology to the students." And so they've been deferred for many years. And so, um, we're, we're looking to deliver to them the, the Mac Air, uh, devices. Hopefully this fall, if not this summer. So, um, we, you know, it depends on, we're waiting for some monies to come in. E-Rate and Tom knows, you know, we've been, uh, waiting for that. So, um, I think it's, it's, it's a solid plan. I think they've come up with a rationale where they want to use, um, the technology in the classroom. They've already have been using it. And, uh, so there, there's a certain familiarity and I think we need to, uh, be able to leverage that as well and, uh, move forward. So I don't know if there's any other particular questions about that that you have, but, um, you know, we're, the biggest challenge I think we have right now is, is the professional development side of it and, and bringing, uh, teachers up. Because basically, we've accelerated the timeline for the, uh, the, the high school. You know, they're, they're getting, the same time that they're getting their devices, the students are, are getting a, a one-to-one.
Steve, I would imagine there's much more support needed for one-to-one devices than with the lap carts. Are you comfort, comfortable with our ability to support the students with these devices? I mean, I'm sure, you know.
Yeah, well, what we have, we have set up a, a plan where we can, uh, call it hot swapping. So immediately, let's say, you know, Johnny Jones's computer breaks. They bring it in, we're able to give them a, not an equal substitute, but a substitute so that at least they can be operational. And then we'll be able to bring those, uh, um, devices in and, and take care of them and repair them or do whatever we need to do and to support them. It's been interesting through this COVID experience because, um, the support has all been remote. And we've got many homes out there that have been, you know, uh, emailing technology@rhinebeckcsd.org. You know, my, my inbox keeps exploding every, every morning, you know, with, with requests. And, and they're, they're individual requests, you know, of, of parents having some difficulties with this or that. A lot of times, it's just logistical things, nothing major. But, uh, you know, the support of those things is, is, um, is critical. And it's a good question because one of the things that the board did last year and, and it really, uh, it proved to be well worth the investment was, uh, the software, the device management software that we bought called Jamped. And that enables us to remotely go in and load software, go into those machines remotely. Matter of fact, Brendan has been able to go into students' machines from his house, you know, into the student's house, into their, the computer that the school district issued, and load software or be able to check out to see what's going on and be able to update and do some, um, you know, um, intervention and mitigate the problems that he has. So it's been, it turned out, you know, as we, when we got the program, it was a very, um, it's, it, the learning curve's on, it's difficult. And so Brendan has been spending a lot of time learning that program. And, uh, as he became comfortable with it towards mid-year and, uh, shortly after Christmas, yeah, we started pushing some things out onto some carts at the elementary and, and doing some experimentation. Uh, when this COVID-19 event occurred, um, he went full bore into it and, and was able to really, uh, the learning, it accelerated his learning curve and we were able to address a lot of things that we would not have been able to do otherwise. So, um, it was providential that, that we were able to get that software when we did.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Steve or Joe? So Joe, is there, is there a plan being formulated for how the one-to-one, like, if we get them in September, how are they gonna be used in the classroom? I mean, is that already in process? What, you know?
Well, it's, it's, it's gotta start with the professional development first. You know, you need, you need the machines in the hands of the high school teachers. Uh, and I only say high school teachers, not to single them out, but the, uh, middle school teachers already have, uh, laptops and they've been making extensive use of, um, of the, uh, the, the Macs that are on the carts, especially in the middle school. So obviously, you have to have the tools in the hands of the people who are gonna do the work and that's the teachers as well as the students. And then the next part of that is the professional development. And even though he's, he's not able to be here with us tonight, he has been at, um, uh, at least, uh, one or two of the Finance Committee meetings where we've discussed this. Uh, he's been at the Curriculum Committee meeting. So he's, he is definitely bought in and, uh, has his own, uh, thoughts about how we provide professional development to, to our staff. So, uh, some teachers are gonna need more PD than others. Uh, we're talking now with Marvin about what we might be able to do during the summer as well as what we will be able to do, uh, when school gets back in September, assuming that that happens, of course. You know, I would caution everybody that we're not gonna snap our fingers on September 2nd and have everybody as up to speed with the machines and with all the PD that they need. And they're gonna, our teachers are gonna be getting professional development regarding use of the technology in their classrooms as well as remotely for, um, for a period of at least a year or more. Again, this is not a snap of the finger. Granted, most of them are way ahead of where they would have been had we not been in this current situation with having to provide, uh, remote learning for the last, uh, month and a half and potentially, we, we don't know yet, but potentially through the end of the school year. So they've already gotten a lot of hands-on, uh, in some, in some ways, fly-by-the-seat-of-their-pants, uh, experience this spring. They've also gotten, uh, gotten some professional development. Some of our staff have been, um, doing a great job, um, pushing out, uh, PD to, uh, to staff who have questions about different platforms or whatever. So the process. So the process has already started. And we're seeing that the familiarity and the acceptance is at a much higher level than it was, I'd say, at the beginning of this year before everybody was put in the position of having to provide learning remotely. So we feel that this is an opportunity for us. Again, if we can make the numbers work, and part of making the numbers work is buying the machines, the technology. Part of making the numbers work is being able to have the resources to provide the professional development. If we can pull those pieces together, we think this is a really valuable opportunity for the school district to move forward with the level at which we use technology to deliver instruction. So again, we're seeing this as an opportunity that we're working. And, you know, we're, you know, we're learning new things as we're going along. But I mean, this is not a case of we're vacillating from one thing or another. As the more this gets to be one step closer to potential reality, we're learning new things. And we think we're working pretty aggressively towards putting together a plan that's going to make this thing work, starting at the beginning of the school year. Again, I want to emphasize, it's not going to happen on September 4th. But it will be starting to happen by September 4th. Part of that will depend on how we're able to put together the funding stream, to buy the technology that we need. And when we can get that to happen, whether we're able to buy machines outright or whether we need to go through a lease purchase process. And if the latter, whether we do that directly with Apple or whether we do it through BOSI's. I mean, there are various options. We're looking at all of them. We want the best option, not necessarily the quickest option, but the best option for the district financially and instructionally. So we're looking at all options, weighing the options, getting information upon which to base our decision. And if this is something that the board will support, then we feel very confident that we can make this happen, starting at the beginning of this school year.
So Jack, go ahead.
I can wait till, oh, whatever. Are we, I guess, Steve and/or Joe, are you in contact with your peers, neighboring districts who are maybe farther along from this than we are?
Yes. Yeah, they have been going on actually for months. There's been, because as Joe mentioned before, we were looking to go to a one-to-one prior to this. And so we had had prior conversations with neighboring school districts about this and, you know, what we need to put in place, if there are policies that need to be put in place. Matter of fact, we spent a significant amount of time this morning at admin talking about the various options and some of the logistical things that we need to go through. So yeah, so those conversations have been going on for quite some time.
And so it sounds like, I mean, there's obviously still a lot of work to be done about getting the devices and getting the professional development. But then there will be kind of an overarching plan on, you know, what the expectation is or what, you know, how they're going to be used in the classrooms at some point.
Yes, and this all has to tie in together.
Right.
The technology, the professional development, and what our vision is for teachers using this technology to deliver instruction, both in their classrooms as well as to communicate with their students when they're not in school. And I'm not talking about coronavirus school closures. I'm talking about normal kids at home submitting work to their teachers, using the technology, feedback back and forth between students and teachers. Obviously, the COVID-19 issue was a drastic shock to the system for every school district, pretty much every school district in the state and the country. But we've seen some good response from our staff. So we're encouraged that this will work here. And I think because of everything that's happened over the last couple of months, building on the work that Steve was doing prior to the school closures, we think that, again, if we can get all the pieces to fit together, and we think that is eminently doable, that we can make this thing happen and probably make it happen sooner than it would have been able to happen had COVID-19 never happened, had we not had our entire teaching staff at home delivering instruction remotely. It would have, you know, it would have happened, but it would have happened more slowly. And I think the current situation will assist our school district to take that much step, that next step. And Steve used the term more aggressively, and I would agree with that. And aggressively in a good way, not a bad way.
Joe, I mean, I agree. And I mean, we've, you know, we've been talking about this over the years as well. I mean, the difference, though, that going to, if the board commits to going to a one-to-one device, I mean, this isn't like laptop carts where kind of teachers can opt to use them or not use them. I mean, students all have them. This is kind of, you know, a change in the way we do business, basically, right?
Yes. Well, we've already scratched the surface on that at the middle school. So, you know, we've already made some significant inroads there. I think the, you know, to quote from Star Trek, you know, the final frontier was the high school. And we've gotten some very positive feedback through Ed Davenport about the interest of the high school staff to want to move forward with this. So again, I think it's a teachable moment for our high school staff. It sounds to me like they are ready. So that's our impetus in doing it. If Ed had gotten back to us and said, yeah, I talked to my staff and they're still pretty lukewarm about this whole idea, we may have taken a different approach. But if they're poised to make the move and if we can enable that move to happen, we think it's the right time.
Yeah. And Diane, you mentioned the carts. One of the things that I had noticed before we had to leave school due to COVID-19 was that the usage of the carts at the high school was on an upward trajectory, week by week. I mean, it used to be, you know, sometimes there'd be, you know, some days where a cart might not be used for an entire day, you know, which would, you know, would be kind of disturbing, not, I don't know, disturbing is a very word, but, you know, it'd be concerning to me. And then what I found is as we got into the winter months and into, you know, the December, January, February, into those months, we found that they were used a lot more at the high school level. So, you know, what you're seeing is that there was a growth already occurring prior to this event to use this technology more and more in the classroom, which was encouraging to me.
Does anybody else have any questions? So are you looking for board approval tonight? Or where, I mean, with the transfer of that money, is that your sign of board approval or what?
No.
Do you want to address that piece of it?
Yeah. What that revenue is, is recognizing additional monies that are coming, that we have new revenue streams, the grants we got from Senator Serino and Assemblyman Cahill.
Last year.
Plus, we're getting money back from E-Rate that Steve has mentioned a few times. So those are revenues that we did not know about, so we're going to recognize them. So that increases our revenue side to the budget. The offset is on the expenditure side, which I have right now as computer equipment. If in the future, nothing has been determined at this moment, we could use those monies to purchase 139 computers at this time and this year's using the monies we have in this year's budget. Nothing whatsoever is being proposed at this time. There's still a lot of, on the financial side, that on my side that needs to be done. There's different ways of outright purchase to lease purchase. So there's a lot of different scenarios. And we can't do it just ourselves either. It's a big financial lift. And we couldn't do it just as a school district. We'd be having to look to go outside of our organization to look for some funding out there or else it'd be a slower rollout of devices. So Diane, to kind of circle back around to your question, we're trying to position the school district in the best possible financial situation to make this happen for the start of the coming school year, if we're able to. Ultimately, your vote on doing this will be having a line item in the final budget that is approved by the board for computer purchases and for associated professional development. We're obviously not there yet because we haven't even gotten a word on when a vote on the budget will be. We haven't gotten, we've been cautioned by a number of professional organizations not to adopt the budget until we have a budget vote date. But when that day comes, and it will have to come fairly soon, and it might come more quickly than it normally would play out in a regular budget development cycle. But we want to be ready for it when it's here. And that will be when the board will make a commitment to moving forward with this. But we're not asking for that this evening.
Any other questions? Okay. Curriculum's up next?
Yes, that's me. So we met April 23rd. And our meeting generally was, surrounded the impact of COVID, the New York state pause, the school closures, and how that impacted our curriculum, the technology, learning management systems, and our learning standards. So currently, the teachers at all three levels are working to meet the development needs of the students. And many of the teachers are using an asynchronous teaching method. We were concerned about gaps. And given the unprecedented times, the reality is that we were likely going to see some gaps. And we'll just figure out how we're going to fix those. We also raised a question about assessments. How are they being assessed? And will there be a need for any kind of remediation of a course or of a subject? So we just, we rose, those questions were raised. We don't have answers for those yet. Right now, on the secondary level, the students are going to be graded on a pass/fail system with their standards met or not met. New York State Board of Regents has provided the flexibility at the local level to determine how these standards for each course have been met. And our administrators have decided that two hours of academic work was reasonable. And that's what they're doing right now. Engagement and completion of these tasks will result in a pass. And there were some concerns about students that are not engaging. And those students are being identified and targeted. Special education teachers are providing one-to-one support for those students that were receiving it prior to school closures. They talked about technology, a lot of the things that we already discussed. We discussed the type of technology used, including ClassDojo, Google Classrooms, Canvas. So each school is using something different right now. We talked about Zoom. Some of the teachers are concerned about using Zoom because of security. We also talked about the going to a one-to-one technology in the future. To date, we have given out somewhere between 130 and 150 devices that we've loaned out. And that's pretty much what we talked about. We are tentatively to meet again on May 6th. And at that time, we're going to invite the principals and the administrators to help address some of the questions that we had that we weren't able to answer.
Yeah, Jackie, if I could just jump in there.
Sure.
We started discussing most, if not all, of these questions at our administrative meeting today. That meeting went for about two hours and 45 minutes. I mean, it was a marathon, but there was a lot there for us to be discussing. So I expect that by the next curriculum meeting, we'll have answers to most, if not all, of those questions. So we started that discussion today, which is the first time we met as an administrative team since this curriculum meeting.
Great.
Questions for curriculum?
Joe, I would just say, if you could help us understand kind of the progression of distance learning, given that it's six, eight weeks already and there's no synchronous learning going on, when do you think, if at all, that would happen? I mean, given that we may not go back to school until at least June 1st?
Yeah, I'm not sure that synchronous learning is really viable at this point, at least not as a every kid, every class, every subject type of strategy. I think one thing we've learned is that the scheduling at home, especially scheduling around parents who are working from home, about households with multiple children in the home, makes juggling synchronous learning an almost insurmountable challenge. Where with asynchronous, you know, the kids can participate regardless of what time of day they want to access that or not. So I'm not sure that synchronous learning, in terms of the pressures on the home, is really the best option at this point. That's just my opinion. But you asked, so I'll share my thinking with you. I think the more flexibility that we can provide students and their families in accessing what our teachers have to offer, the better it is for everybody. I'm not saying there is not a place for some synchronous activities, but as the primary or the only strategy for rolling out remote learning, I think there are more bumps in the road than a lot of people might imagine just with the scheduling and coordinating of those activities. So that's, I'll just share my opinion on that.
But I don't think it has to be all or nothing. I think it could be a transition, right? I think, you know, students need some contact with their teachers. That's other than just, here's the assignment for the week and take points off if it's not handed in on time. And I think that there's more that they could be doing as this goes on longer and longer. That's my only comment.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't disagree with that statement. I think we're getting there. We're not there yet. And we're certainly not there with every teacher. And some are further along the road with that than others are. And, you know, part of that is not having had the opportunity to provide them with much of anything in terms of staff development before the hammer dropped on us. We didn't even have the advantage, as a few other school districts in the area did. Some of them had a superintendent's conference day on the Friday before or the Monday after. So that, again, not that one day would totally prepare any teacher for what we're dealing with today. But, you know, we were right into it, jumped in the fire on Monday, March 16th, without any opportunity to really. Any opportunity to really gear up, so I I think considering. Considering that, uh, I think many of our teachers are doing uh an excellent job. There's always room for improvement and for some more than others, there's, you know, I'd be lying if I said that everybody is up to uh. To speed ninety eight percent on this. Some have more ways to go than the others, but I think they're all working hard to uh to get to that point, whether we'll be there by the end of the school year or not. Uh, hard to say. We're we're doing the best we can and uh. We'll we'll continue to provide professional development both between now and when we return to school. As well as after we after we return to school. And it's going to be an ongoing process for for all of us.
Joe, I I mean, I think, you know, you that's absolutely, you know, I agree with everything that you're saying. In the minutes here, there was a suggestion about the possibility of a survey.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's possible that we could be out for the rest of the year and that's a lot more weeks to go, I'm wondering if there's any thought to doing that. You know, a survey could just be a great way of getting some data to to try to see if we need any course corrections or, you know, it can be valuable for.
Yeah.
Everyone, for teachers to see if what they're doing, working or, you know. So I'm just wondering if there's any thought to doing something like that.
As as I mentioned a little earlier, we discussed all of those ideas today, but you know, when when. You know, I'm not going to throw out a half dozen good ideas to our administrative staff and and have answers to all of those questions, so we'll. We'll continue having that discussion, we're we're meeting every week as an administrative team, so uh. I expect some feedback from them next week when we meet. And shortly after that, we'll be meeting with the curriculum committee, so I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, actually.
Yeah, I I've always been in favor of surveys, so. Um, I have a question about, I just want to make sure I understand this in the minutes about the grading at the. Secondary, so students are being graded on a pass fail, which means they've either met the standards or they haven't met the standards.
That's my understanding.
But what, you know, reading the minutes, it's saying that basically engagement and completion of tasks. Are determining, you know, if if you pass, so. How if we're if we're basically saying if you do the assignments you're given and you're participating and, you know, whatever's being asked of you, you're going to pass. How does that translate to if you've met the standards?
Well, I I can only, I can only say that that that's the uh, that would be the teacher's. Assessment of what what has been done, how the student has engaged, how the student has responded. I can't sit here and give you a rubric for how it would work in a particular course or not. Our building principals might be able to give you that. Our teachers should be able to to give you the way they're going to make that uh determination, obviously. With a pass fail. Scenario, uh, it's, there's more flexibility there for teachers to make those judgments. Um, and we have to rely on their expertise as educators to make those judgments as best they can. I don't think anybody is sitting here and saying that any kind of grading. Approach in in this kind of a rollout of uh of instructional material is is ideal. Uh, there's there's no way that it's as good as being face to face with the with a child in your classroom. But that's not an option for us, so we're we're doing the best we can, given the conditions that we're working under.
Uh, any other questions for curriculum? Okay, uh, we'll move on to twenty twenty one budget development.
All right, Tom, you're on.
All right, uh, so I I want to say a few things before we start looking at numbers, so. Right now, there still is not a budget vote date yet. We've gotten uh some information uh from the Division of Budget. From New York State, not Division of Budget. Recommending that we don't even consider adopting a budget till after May fifteenth. Uh, and the reason is is that uh this is the actually April thirtieth is the end of the first month. In New York State's new fiscal year, remember their fiscal years runs from April to March, ours runs from July to June. So this is going to be their first look in at the end of this month. And I can tell you right now. That their revenues are at least ninety nine percent below what they expected. And costs are more than a hundred and two percent more than they expected, so cuts are coming. They, the Division of Budget wants to be able to get those cuts out to everybody. So before we adopt a budget, we'll have made some decisions. So we don't know what those our impact is yet. Like I said before, our impact on our state aid in the adopted budget was only a deduct of a little over six thousand dollars. Which was our foundation aid increase. So, but we're hearing up to a twenty percent. Decrease in state aid, that's the potential high end, that's a worst case scenario. We're hoping it's something less than that, and it may get rolled out. Like on a quarterly basis to us too. So as we're putting this together and talking with our administrator, we are looking at things in our budget. That we can put off. Uh, down the road until we know more about it, that there are things that we won't purchase. But we're going to be working that out and until we hit different milestones as we go through next budget year. That uh we won't make certain purchases until that time. Uh, so that that that's number one, I wanted you to know that, now, here's the thing now, this is coming from the Division of Budget. The governor may do something altogether different instead of outdate like soon, I don't think that's going to happen. We're just right now, there's most of everything when it comes to, in fact, all. Required deadlines are measured from the vote date backwards. For example, the budget hearing is held between seven and fourteen days. Before the budget vote. But then there's legal requirements to get in the paper, petitions that need to be signed for. Board of uh board member elections, so there's all that stuff that has to be done as we lead up to this. And on top of that, we don't know how that vote's going to be conducted. By all absentee ballots, a mixture of absentee in person, mail-ins, I I, we just don't know what that's going to look like yet. So we'll we'll have to see where that goes, uh, as far as that's concerned, but. We still have time to construct this budget and it's a budget that's a little bit in flux, to tell you the truth. Because we don't know what to expect when everybody comes back to school. Don't know, uh, but uh. But so I I do want to go over, you know, currently where we're at, uh, remember last time when we met two weeks ago? We were four thousand dollars over uh the tax cap, okay? So, you know, since that time, um, some things have gotten a little bit clearer. Got some better figures for the one to one computing model, which I'll talk a little bit. Uh, so what I'm going to do is I'm gonna, I'm going to share my screen. That everybody can see, you know, where we, not, I'm not going to go through the whole process, this from where we left off, what's in the budget. What we're looking to prioritize. What are items that were still under consideration to put into the budget and to take out of the budget? So let me, I'm going to share my screen now so everybody can follow along, I hope. So, okay, everybody sees that?
Yeah.
I can see it.
Much, much better than typical, so I do like the screen share here so people can follow along.
I can see it better than in the regular meeting.
That's good to know, good to know. Uh, we might might want to do this from now on out. Uh, so what we did here, these are items that are already in the, it says the first draft, these are items that were put into the first draft. That were kind of the new to the budget cycle. And uh, so we see them listed there. And uh, as we see, it was five hundred twenty nine thousand, we have taken out ten thousand, it's a five hundred nineteen thousand, but. What we did on the left-hand side, and it's 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 by building. But within each building, they're prioritized as to what is the neediest. So to to give you an example, if you look under district on the left-hand side in the middle, number seven. It's a contractual social emotional learning consultant. That 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 would be something, okay, it's a, we never had, that would be one of the things we would say, you know, let's not purchase that. Or or it may be something we deck out of the budget, I mean, it's 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 part of that, so that's that list, we seen it last time. So let me just go to the next page because we have some updates here. And uh, so. Okay, so these are items that are not in the current budget whatsoever, they're items that, you know, are up for consideration. So there's a few things, we've knocked some things out completely that were on there earlier and we just said, it's just really not the right time for this. So we're still looking at five thousand to the arts and ed, you know, if if, you know, as a possibility. Uh, another light board and the projector to order twenty for twenty five thousand. If we did put something like that in the budget, like I said, we would put it off until the end of next year, until where we knew where we were financially. We're still in a good place financially, we may go ahead with the purchase. That would not be something I would say on July first, we're going to go out and purchase, so those are the type of things we're looking at to make sure. Now, in the next line, as you see right under that, I struck it out and that was just struck out, and that's the mental health counselor. Uh, it it's just, it's too early for that, we haven't had time to to be able to go through that and really decipher what that looks like. Now, the next four items go into that one to one computing model that was discussed earlier. Now, to me, what you're seeing here is. The cheapest way to go over the long term because we're just buying this outright, there's no finance charges, anything of that nature, this is just outright purchase. This, what you're seeing here would be if 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 we uh. Purchased those a hundred and thirty nine models now using those monies. That we we talked about a little bit earlier. Uh, increasing it through the, what we received from our legislators and the E rate and what we have leftover equipment to purchase a hundred and thirty nine this year. This two hundred and forty one would purchase the additional. That would bring us up to three hundred and ninety uh computers together. Uh, which is basically uh in a couple of years when the high school is at its top amount plus enough for all the teachers. For that's three hundred and ninety, uh, but that also comes with Apple Care uh support. Uh, that cannot be financed, that's a year to year type of cost. Uh, one of the things that was discussed today that. We kind of remembered once, but I forgot to think about it, and that's insurance for the computers, what happens if somebody drops it? Uh, one of the things that we found out from a neighboring district that when um. Uh, they were going to put the cost back on the on the families and they found that they only collected maybe ten to fifteen percent of what was owed. And that's caused a real issue, uh, so we really wanted to get a figure on what it would cost to insure them for the drops that may happen. Uh, still putting owners onus on the students, uh, you know, they just can't damage things, they'll be held responsible for those, but. For those accidents that do happen. Plus, a a one to one computing for professional development, forty thousand, now we started with eighty and eighty is needed. But uh, Mr. Krebs has said he has money already in his professional development. And some of his title grants to help offset that initial eighty, uh, so that would help lower that. Uh, so that would just be the first year cost and we'll get into the second year cost of what that would look like. Um, summer scholars, it it not. We don't even know if a summer school will be running this summer, let alone sending kids to a a. A a a great program, but one that more than likely is not going to be running anyways. Um, looking for additional six thousand for additional field trips. Summer school, this is kind of a new one, we're trying to grapple with this, we don't really know what it's looking like, I have six thousand dollars in the budget. For that, and that's typically to take ten courses. Okay, that means taking ten courses, it could be five people taking two courses or ten people taking one course or anywhere in between. And each exam is fifty dollars. So, so we initially put that in there, but that goes back to what Diane was getting to earlier. Are they proficient and all that, and how do you tell? So if a teacher says, nah, I'm not going to do that, this is an avenue for them to meet those requirements over the summertime. So they can pick up for where they left off and hopefully have a a successful rest career. We don't, we're trying to get a handle on what that potentially could be. And and once again, we're not even sure if a summer school would be running this year at Duchess Bocie depending upon. You know, with with further directions from the governor. I don't know if they'll, you know, they'll do uh online type of programs, I'm not sure. I don't know, so you know, there's a lot of unknowns out there. So if we did all those, it's three hundred and fifty three thousand, I'll I'll get back to our our budget again in in a second and put it all together for you. But what that did to the next year is, and this is going no lease, and I'll I'll put another model together with the lease, but let's just get through this one here. So then in the second year, those four costs for the for the one to one will still continue with additional cost. Um, and and that being, you know, that fifteen thousand dollars or sixteen thousand dollars for that Apple Care support. And the professional development. And in the final one, in the bottom one there, it should just be the sixteen thousand, that that hundred thousand in there through the the lease, I forgot to take that out of there, so. As you see over the years, that initial thrust of money that's is required. So, so those are still the things under consideration. And the third, uh, it really hasn't really changed at all, I just, I did change something a little bit around here just to to make it a little bit easier. And and that here is, and i- i- if we were to uh go with this option about the the three teachers. Uh, in uh the high school who retired this year, and I won't go through every single line so everybody understands this. So the first line, what that would be looking at is to hire a math point four position, point four. Okay, so no benefits. The next line is for the reading teacher who retired and not looking to replace at all. There's a savings of about a hundred and ten thousand. And then the last one here is for science, and it would be a point five because it's two classes. And a lab every other day, so that's where the point five comes in, it's two classes and a lab, that equals a point five. So that would come with. With benefits, uh, but you still see a savings there of thirty seven thousand dollars, but altogether. Two hundred and twenty one thousand altogether, potential savings there. Uh, i- i- if if that's so desired, okay? Uh, so those are the the three pages we saw before. And what I'm going to want to do now is, let me see if I can come to here, so. So I just wanted to go over what we did, and if I, I did not do a whole new draft, there's no draft for yet at all. This is just all conceptual because really there was, you know, we got a little bit of time here, it's really looking at various options. So when we were last together two weeks ago. We were four thousand dollars above the tax cap. So what we saw on that one page before was is those uh, the one to one computing model. That, you know, full-blown, it's it's ours, our own. Plus those additional monies for summer school, uh, arts and ed and the like, uh, that weren't huge monies. So that would bring us even further over the tax gap. But if we enacted the reductions, which was over two hundred and twenty one thousand. We're still left with, you know, a hundred and thirty five thousand dollar gap of being over. So that's why I was trying to say before is, even with this model, even with the lease model. We are still going to be a bit short and we are going to need to to look outside our organization. You know, for for hopefully getting grants outside of our, of of us, and I hope uh we're successful, and I know we're we're trying to, we're working on that. So questions about where we are with the budget and, you know, we we still have a few more weeks to put this together. But at some point, it's going to get sprung on us and we're going to have to make some decisions real quickly. When that time comes, it it, we won't have a month to put it together, we'll have basically. Probably a week, maybe two weeks uh to to really finalize it.
Questions? I can't see everybody now, so.
Oh, oh, let me, let me see how I. Unshare it. I don't know. Up share. All right. There you go. We can always go back to it if we need to.
Questions for Tom? All right. Tom, I have a couple of questions. So, there were a few things on this list that, when we first talked about them, were on here, but they weren't really fleshed out yet, and I'm just wondering if they have been. And, a couple of examples of that are the, oh, sorry, I got it up on my other screen, the sustainability initiatives, the mental health physician, the, there was another one, social emotional learning consulting. Those are a few things that there was questions on before that, you know, hadn't really, we didn't have answers yet. So, I'm just wondering if, if you, if we have any of those now.
Well, let me see here. Try to get that thing up on the screen, unfortunately, it's sitting behind my share here, so, sorry about that.
Let, let, Tom, let me just jump in here for a minute if I could. Some of those, those items that you mentioned, Diane, right now are, are placeholders, to be quite honest with you, and I'll, I'll address the sustainability money, because that was my recommendation to put that in. I know we heard a lot from our community over the last number of months pre-COVID-19, that our district should be doing more in terms of sustainability. I believe that came up as a topic during the superintendent's search. So, I put some, I, I talked to Tom about putting some money in the budget as a placeholder to, to do some of those things that our community was asking for. I don't have a plan to give you now, and that's probably something that would be developed by the new superintendent, and that's also something that if we're not able to get any outs, get sufficient outside support for some of the other things that we need the support for, we may have to cut that back. And I'm just using that as one example, that could apply to several of the other things that are, that are in the budget, that we think would be worthwhile. But, we're also, you know, we're ho- also holding some of those things in abeyance, depending on how the other things Tom talked about today might pan out. If we have to make cuts for other reasons, we need something to cut from that's not going to seriously jeopardize or jeopardize at all our instructional program. So, so that, that's my response to your question, Diane. I'm sure there, there are other things that maybe Tom could also address, but that, that's my shot at it.
Also, one of the other things that will be occurring over the next, you know, couple of weeks, I've been working with Christine Natoli, to really take a look at where our expenditures are between now and the end of the year. This is kinda throwing our budget into a tizzy. We, we, there's a lot of payments that we're not paying, we still have to figure out, you know, what those savings are. That's all gonna go to fund balance. Okay, so, you know, so there's gonna be more money there that could be used for other purposes, too. I forgot to mention that before. We'll have to determine that, you know, exactly what that looks like. That's, we're still waiting for directions in some things, and, and there's a lot of things that, you know, in some areas, we're gonna save money, in other areas, we're gonna probably end up spending more money. It depends whether or not we're coming back to school this year or not come back to school this year. So, there's a lot of still things up in the air for us to determine, you know, what does our fund balance look at the end of this year? So, but it, it's gonna be greater than what it is currently, I, I can tell you that, because there's definitely savings that are being incurred. No substitutes are coming in, no extra pay is happening, no overtime, trans, some, some transportation contracts, other contracts, since the services aren't being provided, aren't being paid out. So, those monies are all, you know, going to be future savings for us. But, when I, when I do take a, a look at that list, and let me see if I can find it for myself here to, to address some of them here. Okay. Like I said, we did categorize this, to give you an example, when I was talking to Dr. Davenport, like he said, the only thing he needed on that list that he needed to have were those social studies textbooks. He needed those. The other equipment, you know, some of that we may be able to do this year. It's not the equipment part of it, but the materials for the Project Lead the Way project. But, as far as interactive goggles, the, the early college, those type of things, some of these things, you know, he can do without. It's the same thing with the equipment we're looking at, too. Those would be things held in abeyance. They may have to be redirected to other things that may occur to us. You know, heaven forbid, we do have an infection, the infection ends up in our school, and we have to have a professional cleaner come in. That's gonna cost money and shut us down for a couple of days. The mental health, that, like I said, that's at the very low end of things. That would be a thing that we would probably do on a piecemeal basis, based upon maybe just a sophisticated case or there, it's something we couldn't handle. So, we need the twenty thousand? No, maybe not, but, you know, maybe five thousand to help us in those more difficult ones. You know, but when it comes to special ed, the impartial hearing officer, those are things that are gonna happen, we, we gotta have those type of things. You know, having the counselor, I know we talked about it a little bit this morning. It would be a nice to have, that's for sure, but if other things, you know, take precedence, they take precedence. And unfortunately, don't quite have that crystal ball yet. There's just too many unknowns just to say, this is what it's gonna look like. You know, if I knew exactly what was gonna happen next year, we could plan it out, but, you know, until, you know, I, there's, there's a lot of things that we hear out there, that you just don't know what it's gonna look like when it comes back. Heard split schedules, coming in every other day. I, I mean, you know, how, how you do social distancing in school and things of that nature. There's so many different things out there that, you know, we're gonna have to be very flexible. That, that's what I have to say, we just have to be very flexible.
Tom, I think you're right. I mean, there's, I mean, I think, like you're saying, all the things we're gonna save, there could be plenty of things where we have to spend money on, you know, additional cleaning, transportation, all, all kinds of things. We, like you said, we just don't know. It just makes me a little concerned, like, to be adding things to the budget, you know, when they could be taking money away, we could lose state aid. I mean, I guess I, with this list, maybe it would be helpful to know, you know, you said some of this stuff could get pushed to the end of the year, but some of it can't. Like, so what, what, I guess, maybe for next time, maybe if we had on the list what things you'd be needing to decide on now, or in the summer, or earlier. I mean, everything can't be pushed. I mean, if you're hiring people, there's some of these things that would require hires. You know, I, I, maybe breaking it down that way, because, you know, how much are we really saving or, or, or keeping till the end of the year that we could repurpose for something? I mean, if we, some of these things, if they're once they're put in, put in process, you, you're not gonna be able to change.
True, true. But, but, go ahead, Joe.
And I was just going to, to say that we can certainly, and we will, go through those, those lists and identify things that we could defer purchasing until later in the year, and if we got whacked with a, with a, a heavy mid-year state aid cut, we just then wouldn't buy those things. So, yeah, we can, we can do that. I mean, we've been, I know Tom and I have discussed, just to, to give you one example, is some of the things that we budgeted for, for Sheldon to do field maintenance on our own, which would save us money in the long run, but with, there's no reason we'd have to buy that equipment this summer. We won't even have fields to, to use that equipment on until maybe the end of the spring. So, that's something we could hold off buying until much later in the year, and then if we had no choice and we couldn't, and I'd rather not buy a piece of machinery than have to access a teacher at the, you know, at three-quarters of the way through the school year. So, we can go through that list and tag those for the board, I don't, you know, for our next meeting, certainly.
Yeah, I think, I mean, unless it's just me, I just think that'd be helpful if we knew what things you'd be looking to do right away, and if board members aren't supportive of that.
Yeah.
No.
Sure. We'll do that. I would, I would also say, too, that, you know, so, at the, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, this, this is the twenty-eighth year I've worked with the Board of Education to build an annual school district budget, and many years that process is fraught with, with a number of uncertainties. I can remember the years where the legislature and the governor weren't getting a budget passed until the beginning of the summer. So, that was a, a pretty big question mark for those years when that was the norm and not the exception. But, I can, I can easily say that in twenty-eight years in New York State, the uncertainties of this budget development process are the most significant that, that I've ever seen. So, we're, we're sitting here scratching our heads most days as well, just because we don't know. We don't know, and some of these things, we're not gonna know until they happen. So, we're trying to position our development of this budget to provide us with the maximum flexibility, to do the most we can for our children, if the worst-case scenario doesn't come down, and if it does, or maybe not even the worst case, but not a pleasant scenario comes down, that we're, we're poised to make those adjustments without having a, a, a serious impact on our instructional program. And, at the end of the day, whenever the date gets set by the governor and the date for budget adoption gets set as a result, we will bring you a budget that is below the tax levy cap. That's, that's what you'll get. Unless you want it significantly lower than that tax levy cap, which I think is a dangerous thing to do in, in these, in these uncertain times, but we'll bring it on, we'll bring it in under the tax levy cap.
Right. Well, hopefully we'll have more information soon. I mean, the governor today said he would decide about schools and summer school by the end of the week.
Oh, he said.
He, and they said the other day that, you know, they have budget, budget information by the middle of May, so, you know, hopefully by then we'll have many more pieces, so that...
Yeah, and it's, it's nerve-wracking to have to go through this process on a day-by-day basis. It's, it is nerve-wracking, but it's just the way it is. It's, it's our, it's our new reality, and, you know, we all have to deal with it. It's not just Reinbeck that's dealing with it, it's every school district in the state. It's just, it's just the way it is. And, I'm not blasé about it. I let it drive me nuts for a few weeks, and then, then I, I started mentally getting past it, because there's nothing I could do about it. So, we're working, we're working it, and, you know, Tom has been doing a great job positioning our, our budget in development, so that we can, we can meet the board's goals and position ourselves as well as, as we could expect to be positioned. And, both Tom and I lived through the year back in the nineties when there was, there were mid-year state aid cuts, and that was no fun. So, I, I think we all learned a lot from that lesson in, in terms of, of how to be prudent in, in our budgeting, and we're, we'll do the best we can with that.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions on the budget development? Okay, we'll move on to good news. Anyone, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so I got a couple. New York State recognized Reinbeck as a reward, as a recognition school for this school year, based on, based on last year's data. It's always a, a, you know, a year's lag for that. But, they used to be called reward schools. They are now called recognition schools. And I, I would wanna mention two things about that. Number one, as Dr. Davenport is quick to remind me, that that recognition of Reinbeck High School as a recognition school is a district level, not a district level, is a district-wide accomplishment, that our kids don't do as well as they do as high school students if it were not for, for what they're getting at our elementary school and our middle school. I would also note that one of the criteria that I believe is, is significantly responsible for our middle school and our high school not being named as a recognition school is the fact that one of the criteria is better than ninety-five percent taking the state assessments. So, when people say, well, what does it matter if I don't send my kid in to take that assessment? Again, it's a, it's one manifestation of that, and, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that. The second piece of good news is our ranking again this year by U.S. News and World Report as one of the best high schools in New York State and in the country. The information's on Twitter and, and Facebook, in case anybody wants to, to look up the specifics. But, we'd, we'd again been recognized by that, by that publication. So, you know, it's not the, the be-all and end-all, but, but I'll take it.
No, it's, it's good, and we're, and that shows us in the top five percent of high schools na- nationwide as well. Impressive.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever it's worth.
Yep.
Anything else, Joe? You took my two.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I have others, though.
Go for it, Diane.
I think there's good news, the BMS Student Council, they donated five hundred dollars to the Northern Duchess Hospital, their foundation COVID fund, and they brought meals from Buns. So, I thought that was the good news.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it's good news, all the videos coming out of Chancellor, I don't know if everybody's gotten to see them, but there's been three so far. There was a staff video, just a message to students, and then there was a dance video, which might be my favorite, and the staff doing a little dancing to get everybody up and moving. And then I think the last one was their fifth-grade PE council kids working out and showing some exercises for other students. So, I look forward to those every week. So, those are good news. So, the people, if you don't have kids in Chancellor, it's still worth looking at those videos, they're, they're very fun. That's all the good news I have. Anybody else have anything?
I got, I've got another one, just, this is, you know, coming up soon to a computer near you. Apparently, our, our elementary, middle school, and high school music departments are putting together a, a, a music performance activity for the community. So, again, if you haven't seen that on our, on our Twitter feed or on our Facebook page, check that out. I think that's, that's gonna be sometime next week, I believe. They're asking people to, to record, to tape, and submit performances of them singing or playing instruments, or something of that nature. So, I'm...
Joe, are you submitting a tape of yourself?
I, I, I'm not sure that's, that's in my agenda for the next couple of weeks. It'd be, it'd be one way to go out, that's for sure. We'll see. We'll see.
All right. Old business?
I don't believe I have any at this point.
Neither do I. Another opportunity for public comment?
I don't, is it possible for me to ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Comment or a question?
You can make public comment. You're, Mary, feel free to make a public comment.
Okay. I'm just, apologies if this was discussed in a previous board. I'm looking for information regarding what the school and the board are considering regarding the fall. I'm looking for information regarding what the school and the board are considering regarding the fall. Uh, what the different scenarios are that you are looking at and how you're preparing. I think it would be close to criminal if we said in September that we were blindsided again. I think we can think through and plan through a number of different scenarios. Um, and be putting considerations into what they are. I know that other districts are, as well as all the local colleges are considering all the different scenarios that we need to be planning for. And I'm just curious to hear what the school's considering.
We, we have begun that conversation with our administrative staff. And as soon as we have, uh, some plans to provide to the board, we will pass that along to them for their discussion and consideration. But we are having those discussions currently amongst our administrative staff.
Uh, any other public comment? I don't, does anybody, anybody, nobody else sees anything? I don't see anything. So.
Nope.
I'm gonna assume there's nothing else. Um, okay. Um, any other?
I don't have any other, uh.
Mark?
Yeah. So, um, I'll just mention, I, as you know, I represent us on, um, Senator Serino's Education Advisory Committee. Um, the committee met today, uh, via, um, teleconference. Um, and, uh, really it was a opportunity for Senator Serino to hear from, uh, school district, um, school districts about, um, what it is she would like to see, you know, what we would like to have her try to get addressed in Albany. Um, so there were a lot of concerns. Um, someone, uh, suggested, uh, please try no new mandates this year, considering all the budget concerns. Someone asked, uh, for the, uh, govern- governor to act on the region's recommendations on APR. Um, everyone, a lot of people sugge- suggested that we, uh, all make our voices heard, uh, to the federal government representatives about, um, you know, needing funding for the state budget. Let's see, what else was discussed? Um, many people talked about their, uh, how their school districts are handling the situation. So there were some concerns about mental health issues, considering everyone is, uh, sort of sequestered away in their homes for the last few weeks and maybe longer. Um, a lot of concerns about, uh, how to facilitate the budget votes. Uh, when will the budget vote be? And, uh, you know, how to facilitate a vote if, you know, depending on how it's decided that the vote should be carried out, whether it be with social distancing, whether it be, um, a municipal model where the Boards of Education could, uh, approve the budget without a vote by the public. Um, many, many scenarios. Um, and I did express, uh, to the group that, um, you know, when the governor hands down his decisions, that, that we really need to have clarity on what is expected of us. Um, so that, uh, we're not blindsided with, uh, questions that, that we have to try to get answered as we move forward. So, um, the senator was very interested in hearing what everyone had to say and, uh, she promised to, um, try to carry that out, uh, up in Albany and, uh, suggested that, uh, if there are any concerns, to please email her or her staff so that, uh, she can address them.
Mark, did, did she, did it come up or did she talk about, uh, you know, I'm wondering when they're making, the governor's making decisions about schools, is he consulting any schools or school leaders? Cause you know, like when he talks about, like when he said the other day, you know, he's hearing from schools that they want to have summer school. I just can't imagine a school leader in this state saying they want to have summer school and anything more than just like a conceptual idea, just like, it would be nice if we had more time with kids, but the reality of what that would cost a district and how you could do that contractually. You know, I just, when he says that, I'm like, did he talk to any, like, who, who would be saying that? So I'm just wondering if, if she mentioned anything about like the, like when he's trying to make these decisions, is he consulting with anybody in schools?
Yeah. No, that didn't really come up, but, uh, I know Dr. Handler was very adamant about, um, some of these issues, uh, being, brought forward to the state government.
Yeah. I mean, it just, you know, that, like, if he says this week, yeah, we're going to go to school for the summer and then that's it. No other, no guidance or any, any other thought to that. I mean, that, that would be kind of crazy. So I'm just, just wondering like what the process is. I mean, obviously he's got a lot on his plate trying to figure out, but I'm just wondering if there's any, he has anyone on his council or anybody that is guiding him if she, if she knew, but I guess maybe she's gonna.
I suspect she doesn't really know what he's doing.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, you know, she's gathering information and she can pass that along, but just wondering if you had any insight on that.
No, unfortunately I don't.
Thanks for participating in that. I think it's, you know, useful to have our voice heard anyway.
You're welcome.
Any other other?
And I.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to action items. Uh, so from the consent agenda, we're going to be removing 6.1.4 and 6.1.2. Everybody's clear on that? Okay. So can I motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following, uh, consent items as amended?
Second?
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to cast one vote for Thomas Hurley as candidate in 2020, 2021 annual elections of the members of the Duchess County Board of Cooperative Education Services, BOSIS.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to cast one vote for Michael Real?
Real.
Real. As candidate in the 2020, 21 annual election of members of the Duchess County Board of Cooperative Education Services, BOSIS.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to cast one vote for Gully Sanford, Stanford as candidate in the 2020, 21 annual election of members of Duchess County Board of Cooperative Education Services, BOSIS.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt a resolution to direct the district clerk to cast one vote to approve the Duchess County BOSIS administrative budget in the amount of $4,626,362 for the 2020, 21 school year.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to award contract number 3A shingle roofing work $409,711 with the addition of alternative number one SLES skywork, skylight work for $129,000 to Frank Cerus Incorporated Pompano Lakes, New Jersey for a total award of 533, 538,711 dollars.
Second?
Any discussion? Joe?
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, bring to everybody's attention, uh, that this was one of the, uh, one of the pieces of the capital project that we, we bid and the costs came in, uh, way, way high, way higher than our construction management firm felt was appropriate. So we rebid it and, uh, actually, uh, got a, got a pretty, pretty competitive price on that work. Uh, such that, um, we're able to do the, uh, the alternate, which was the, the skylight work at Chancellor Livingston School. So that's, uh, uh, I think in the grand scheme of things, uh, that was a, a, a good decision to rebid it and not that we had much choice. Uh, the original bid price was just, uh, was a budget buster. So it turned out pretty well for us.
Okay. Um, all those in favor? That motion, check off, that motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following 2019, 20 budget amendments to recognize new revenues not previously budgeted for use. These new unrecognized revenue monies come from bullet aid funds granted to the district in the 2018. Oh, that should be 2019, not 29.
Sorry. Yeah.
Uh, school year through Senator Serino and Assemblyman Cahill in the, in the total remaining amount of 73,000. Uh, okay. Do I need to read those all out?
I won't tell anybody.
Okay. Any discussion? Joe?
I just, just wanted to, uh, uh, to let the board know, remind the board that, um, the, those monies, uh, from, uh, Senator Serino and Assemblyman Cahill were bullet aid monies that we got, uh, last school year that, uh, we were, um, we're kind of sitting on waiting for either an emergency or an opportunity. And as we discussed a little earlier in, in the, uh, in the meeting, um, we would, we're, we're making this, um, we're asking the board to approve this motion is so that in the event that we want to use that money in combination with some other monies, uh, to, to purchase, uh, laptops to support a one-to-one computing program. Uh, that will obviously, uh, be money that we don't have to put in the budget that, that will help us a good chunk along the way towards, uh, towards making that one-to-one program a reality. So, uh, just wanted to, uh, again, thank, uh, uh, the senator and the assemblyman for, uh, sending that bullet aid our way. And it, it could play a, a pretty significant, uh, role in, uh, getting us to one-to-one computing in our grade six through 12, uh, schools.
Agreed. I want to thank them very much for this amount, you know?
I'd like to add a couple of comments here too. Um, first of all, like, like, like Joe said, this is not saying that we're doing it. Okay. This is just preparing it in case we need to do it. Need to get the money into the budget to be able to do that. So this is not a commitment to go ahead and do that. Like Joe said, one thing I do want to say though is we would go forward to purchase about 30 units for the teachers though. That's always been planned with that E-rate money. So we definitely do want to go forward at least using that $33,000 there to purchase units for our teachers. So at least they can begin preparing and learning and how to use that, 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 at least as a minimal.
Yeah. Um, any, any discussion?
Oh, sorry. One other thing. If we don't use the money, that $73,000, that's remaining from Senator Serino and Assemblyman Cahill. If we don't use those monies, those monies will be available in the next year to use. It doesn't disappear or anything that much. We, this is only budgetary in nature. We will not transfer the monies unless it is needed for the one-to-one.
Okay. Joe?
Can I make another comment? Sorry to beat this dead horse, but, uh, uh, I, I just wanted also to make mention of the fact that in, in other years, um, when other legislators, um, sent bullet aid money our way, it often came with, with strings attached. Like here's this money, but you need to use it for X or Y. And that's not to say that the strings that were attached to monies that we'd received in previous years were bad strings. Okay? Uh, but I personally would like to, um, uh, appreciate publicly uh, the senator and, uh, the assemblyman for giving us, uh, these, these bullet aid monies with no strings attached to give us the flexibility to use them where they're going to most advantage our school district at a certain time. And I think, um, you know, in retrospect, not using those monies last year when we got them, uh, it could have been a, I think, has been a good decision on our part in retrospect because now we have some, some pretty significant reasons to spend those monies, but we couldn't have if there were strings attached to, to use them for certain purposes. So I just want to publicly appreciate the flexibility with which we've received those monies.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right. That motion passes. And I have a motion to move it executive.
We, we have two items that we pulled out of the consent agenda. Are we doing anything with them?
Um, are, are, are we tabling? Oh, we have to officially table them?
Well, yeah. Um, I, if I, if I could address those.
Yep.
Uh, first of all, item 6.1.4, I, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that my request to table that is absolutely no reflection on Steve Jensen, who has been doing yeoman's work during the school closures, uh, not only in terms of planning, but also in terms of being up at the school on a Wednesday morning, preparing and handing out, uh, uh, laptops to, to our kids and our families who need them. So this is no reflection on Steve. It's more of a reflection on, um, some need to clarify information uh, from the state education department before we move forward and make a designation. Uh, at one point, uh, late last week, I had gotten several communications from, um, from SED that they wanted us to make this designation by, um, by May 8th. And then, um, at the beginning of this week, I got, uh, new information through Dr. Julio at Duchess BOSIS that, that May 8th date wasn't really a, a hard date that, uh, no, we really didn't have to. And it's just, again, just shows you that, that we're not the only ones who are walking around in a daze somewhat confused by what's happened to our world. They're dealing with the same kinds of uncertainties up at, uh, state education department. So as soon as that, um, that, uh, deadline got backed off, that opened up the door for us to get some more clarity on this before making, uh, making a designation. So again, no reflection whatsoever on, on Steve, but that's why I requested that this be tabled until sometime later in the school year when we, we have more clarity on that. Did you want to talk about 6.1.2 Diane? Or do you want me to address it? You raised the question and I think it was a good question.
So I had just asked the question. So the 6.1.2 is, um, the summer study grants for staff. Um, and I had just raised the question in case a lot of these get canceled, you know, are we going to lose the fees on them? Um, and so I just want to know, maybe we should look into that first before we approve them because there's a good chance any of these inputs could potentially get canceled.
Yeah. And that, that was a great question, Diane. And my response to, to Diane was that, um, that some of, that, that could happen to some of them. And again, there's no way of knowing for sure, but that could happen to some of them. Um, some of them, if, if you read through those applications, you'll know that some of them were, uh, are uh, online opportunities. So I would highly doubt that the online opportunities would get canceled. But I couldn't say with any certainty that the, uh, the summer study grant proposals that involved actually physically being in a place and having face-to-face training at some point over the summer would actually happen. And I think the, the one thing that was resonating with me when Diane asked me, asked me that question was that I just got an email yesterday notifying me that, uh, that the Omega Institute out here in the town of Clinton is not going to be operating during the summer. So they've canceled all their programs. So they've canceled all their programs for the summer. Not that that directly relates to any of these summer study grant applications, but clearly some of these organizations that typically would be holding classes, training, professional development during the summer may or may not be canceling their programs. So I suggested to Diane that if we table this, at least until our next board meeting on May, Tom, May?
12.
12, thank you. That that would at least give us a couple more weeks to either contact or have the teachers who submitted these contact the organizations and say, hey, are you still running this, this summer? Or are you canceling your, your offerings? So we'd have a better idea as to the likelihood that some of this stuff might get canceled. Because of course, typically what happens is the teachers, they pay for the, the, the summer study grant arrangements and then they submit claim forms to be reimbursed when, when they're done. So I can imagine a scenario where they pay the money, the course gets canceled, they're not refunded the money. And then will they be expecting us to, the school district, to reimburse them for the lost funds? So I think it's worth taking the additional couple of weeks to just check in and make sure that at least at this point in time, those things are still scheduled to be happening or not.
Right. And if they're not sure, maybe they'll at least give us a guarantee that they'll refund the money if they happen.
We will cer, we will certainly ask for that. So, so I think that was a great question Diane. Thank you. That's the only reason I'm asking you to table that, which you already have.
We didn't officially table it, so.
Okay, well, you might want to consider tabling it.
We might want to do it the right way.
Yeah, yeah, why not?
Can somebody make a motion to?
Have a motion to table 6.1.2?
And just do them, Bill. Can we do them?
6.1.4?
So, second? Oh, no, and, oh, I need to, oh, so moved, sorry.
A second.
Second.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of tabling 6.1.2 and 6.1.4? Okay, those are tabled. And now can I have a motion to move an executive session for the employment history of a particular individual or corporation?
Second?
All those in favor?
Okay, so just so, just so we're all clear on how this is going to work. And Whitney, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to have you all log out of this meeting. And Whitney sent you a, a number for an executive session meeting, which will just be for the board members and me and Tom, and then we'll get out of that meeting when we're done with our, with the executive session business. Okay, so we'll see many of you shortly. Steve, thanks for being here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, I think.
On the motion to, on the motion to go into executive session, is it a individual or is it a corporation?
It's the corporation, Bill. It's a corporation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, we're done. Thank you for being here.